Okay, the line scheduled matter. For the Boris Gledkodorn's Plaza redevelopment located at 964 Ridge Road. Advocate Matt Tomlinson, a marathon engineer, is requesting preliminary final site plan review along with public hearing associated with the proposed redevelopment of the former Hekadorn's supermarket plaza, a 6.68 acre carter located in an eight-seater high-intensity commercial district on the section 269-11. The call of the town was...
Good evening. Matt Tomlinson, marathon engineer. Al Hazelwood is the project architect. We've got various representatives of the owners with us as well. Appreciate the board's time tonight. We are talking about the Hekadorn's Plaza and bring up the concept site rendering first here to talk about. We were here, I believe, last month before the board. Really, from our standpoint on the development side and what we discussed with the board, we have not changed anything relative to it other than adding a significant amount of detail in the plans and application materials that we have submitted to the board. So I'm just going to run through as a brief reminder of what we're looking at and what we're accomplishing and then turn over to Al to talk about the elevations and the building facade improvements as well. So for the board's remembrance, we're increasing or improving, excuse me, traffic circulation and pedestrian access and ADA accessibility throughout the plaza as part of this redevelopment, which includes dressing up the facade primarily focused on the east and east side and south corner. And in doing that, we're lifting the large majority of the parking lot and changing the circulation pattern for accessing to the site to take a lot of the steepness of the existing drive and parking aisle. In doing so, that does reduce some of the number of parking spaces available at the upper level of the plaza, which is the primary retail entrance or focus of the redevelopment portion. Warren's, which is on the lower level, we're proposing to re-spread that lower parking lot and add a row of parking to make the numbers approximately equal to what they are today and incorporating and really increasing functionally the amount of parking that can be used by any tenant throughout the plaza by creating an access point that will provide vertical connection from the upper sidewalk and facade area down to the lower area, whether that's stair or elevator. Yeah? It's going to be an elevator through there, so every space on the project will have ADA accessibility to it. Related to that, we also received several comments from both town staff and the town engineer, which we were able to incorporate some of those into the plan set that was submitted for your consideration for preliminary and final approval. And then subsequent to that, we also replied to that letter and writing which was sent in earlier today, not with much notice for you guys, but we reviewed all the technical comments and areas of concern related to staff. I'm confident that we can address those as we go through the approval process prior to signatures on the plan. I'm happy to discuss any of those in detail with the board, but I did want to touch just on a couple of them. Number one, related to trash and loading. I think we discussed this last time, but the loading dock that faces Bridge Road will only be used for shorter trucks that will not impact or encroach on sidewalk or driveway within East Ridge Road. Those larger delivery vehicles will use the loading dock at the rear of the plaza. Trash and compacters, there's a covered area underneath the building comprised within the lower level. That will continue to be the trash and recycling area, so again, that pickup will not be visible. It will be screened at the back of the building. There was a common or a request for two items that are not yet reflected on...
Excuse me, Matt, where are you? What are you doing? Well, I'm looking at the comments here. You said number one?
Oh, I'm sorry. The first one I wanted to mention, but it's not number one.
Oh, alright.
I apologize. I can point you right to that one.
You know, if you've got this, would it be better to just the board and anybody?
Just go right through them in order?
Just go right through them?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think that'd be an easier way to...
We can definitely do that.
Well organized.
So the comments that the chairman is trimming me out on here is a letter that we dated for today, but we grouped them by who wrote them, at least from our understanding. So the MRB group comments, number one, signature blocks for town representatives being added to the plans, no problem, of course, to make sure that those are on there prior to signature. Town and agency standard notes, those will be added to the plan prior to signature. There's a question related to perforated pipe being used within the parking area. We are proposing to construct several or two retaining walls, really, to make up the grade difference within the existing parking and raise that upper parking area, and then the road or access drive will drop below that. So the perforator pipe really is to ensure that we remove drainage that could get into the sub-bays underneath the paving and ensure that we're not directing water or allowing water to build up behind those retaining walls. We have not performed any test pits in that parking lot or geotechnical exploration, so if the results of that dictate or require a different treatment or solid pipe versus perforated pipe, we'll clarify that prior to final signatures on the plans as well. Moving on to page two, comment number four, the existing system, storm system, there's a couple of comments on storm system. One is related, and I think this one is specific to the existing drainage system within the access drive along the north portion of the property. Right now, those basins are choked up a little bit, and we'll be cleaning those out as part of this project, and we'll be connecting some of the drainage along the lower area, which I'm highlighting with my cursor here, to it. And while we have not done exploration downstream on the storm sewer, we are reducing the amount of water that runs to that area in the first place. And then in second place, we are adding a significant amount of green space within the area that drains to that. So regardless of the capacity or condition, we will be improving the existing conditions for the point where the storm sewer goes off of our property. There's a comment about check dams within the swale between the parking lot and entrance road. We will be preparing a storm water pollution prevention plan. We are just under an acre in disturbance of what is classified as disturbance by the DEC, and that is area where the dirt gets exposed either through removal of pavement or re-grading of green areas. Areas where we are removing pavement and placing stone or fill on top of it are not classified as disturbance if there's six inches of crushed stone underneath the pavement limits. So the large majority of the parking lot that we will be filling, again, dependent somewhat on the material that comes in, which we'll be working with the owners on, may or may not classify as disturbance with that definition by the state DEC. However, it's our understanding that the town requires a SWIP to be prepared when over 26,000 square feet of impervious, so we will be preparing that and complying with all best management practices for erosion and stuff to control. And comments five and six really relate to that, both with the check dams and the silt fence, so we will be complying with those. The fill material we have not sourced yet, we're working on that with various site contractors and pricing this out, so we will have information on that by the time we get to the pre-construction meeting with town staff. The domestic water service diameter material, there's multiple water services to the plaza, and right now, we're proposing to reroute one of the services, which is the domestic one, around the retaining wall and reconnecting it. We're in the process of working with our MEP engineers right now to determine if that service is in fact needed once we replumb the redevelopment of the plaza, because typically the water authority asks that there only be one meter for a single property or tax town number. So we have a little bit more coordination to do with the water authority and plumbing engineers. If it's not needed, that won't be reconnected. If it is needed, we will, of course, add the requested labels. Building department, it's my understanding that we will be bringing the building up to New York State Building Code. That'll all be part of the building permit package, no issues there. The sewer department had a couple of comments related to grease traps and laterals. That will also be part of the building permit package, and we will be in full compliance with their requirements. They included a common or request for some more information about Warren's tenant space. That space is intended to remain as that tenant is going to be there, and so we will work to provide whatever information the building inspector or sewer department is requesting, but as of right now, there's no proposed changes within that tenant space. And then from staff are the next ones, and I'm on page three under community development. The perimeter landscaping and green area, we worked with the owners to really try to create a nice streetscape and dress up the view of the plaza from Hart Road specifically and also along the corner at Hart and Ridge Road. A request for some additional green space between the two driveways is the second comment that I wanted to highlight and discuss with the board. Right now, the request is for, and I'm highlighting with my cursor, a stretch of about 60 feet in length between the curb cut where the normal passenger vehicles enter and exit the plaza and where the loading dock curb cut and an additional curb cut, I guess you could say, for passenger vehicles exist today. This area is quite a bit narrow, where we were able to push the parking edge about 10 feet from the existing sidewalk where Bridge Road was because there was no building structure to limit the layout or design of that parking area. In this area here between the building and Ridge Road, we are constrained by the parking spaces, the loading dock and turning movements for trucks and vehicles as they many times come in and pull out here and then back into that loading dock with the shorter trucks so as not to have to back up on Ridge Road proper. There also would be snow plowing of the sidewalks, which would place that snow after being plowed right into the parking area. So creating or extending landscaping through that constrained area would be very difficult to accomplish, and so we'd like to request that the board consider our answer on that. Respectfully, we wish we had more room there and could continue that, but the pavement width that's in there really serves a good function and purpose on the south side of the plaza there.
Could you, Matt, could you eliminate? We've got eight or nine parking spaces that are along the building.
So that, those parking spaces are for this corner tenant that's very interested in having approximate ADA spaces in parking close to their front door there. We're also, as you know, slightly reducing parking spaces within the plaza, so each of those spaces are, I won't say required, but important to the overall functionality of the plaza and access for clients and customers of the tenants.
Okay, then where have you got to the west of the loading dock there? You're showing the green area.
It's existing landscaping today, or a sloped area that drops, the grade drops quite a bit from the loading dock down to the lower level. I think there's about 16 feet in elevation, top to bottom. So that's just a sloped area down along there, and it basically falls off from right behind the sidewalk, let's see if I can show it.
From the back of those parking spaces that we were just referring to?
I'm sure I've got some dimensions on here which might help my answer, because I don't So there's about 50...
Fifty-seven feet?
That's from the facade. There's about 50 feet from the curb line to the back edge of the sidewalk.
So 50 feet. So the parking spaces, we need to back up 20 feet, or I don't even know.
The driveways throughout the parking lot are 25 feet up the sidewalk.
25 feet?
Yeah.
So you have parking spaces, which come out there, and 25 feet. It's still easier. So we move along Ridge Road, too.
Yeah, there is some room, but again, the entering vehicles, a lot of times, instead of pulling this way and backing into the loading dock, will either pull in to that wider curb cut and back in, so they're not backing up within the Ridge Road travel lane, or they're pulling this way and need that wider room in order to come through and back up into the loading dock area. So it's not just for the, those parking spaces, but also functionally for the delivery vehicles at that area. And again, we're limiting tractor trailers, but do need some functionality for the smaller delivery trucks to be able to access that space to... So I can come back to that for further discussion if needed, but I can go to the rest of the comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Breakdown attack space for footages and proposed uses. I believe that Al has provided that to code enforcement, but that'll also be included in the building permit package that'll be coming in as well. The signage, I'd like to come back to that one with the elevation drawings. I'll just look through the site items first and then turn it over to Al. Dumpster location, again, that's an existing dumpster location within the lower level of the plaza, which is down at the rear kind in the elbow of the existing building at the lower level. That'll remain and still continue to be used. Snow storage areas, we'll have those on the final plans for signature, but we have made accommodation in a lot of the green spaces around the parking that we created as part of this. I touched on the DEC storm water and the town requirement for the SWIP to be prepared, so we'll be in full compliance with that. Then the final comment related to drainage, as mentioned, that connection for the lower road that we're making into the existing system here, and we'll be flushing that system. But the majority of the parking, which all kind of drains right down the hill right now, we're picking up in a closed drainage system, and we're planning to tie that into the structure that's mentioned by the highway department. That's within the lawn area between the parking area and Hart Road. We believe that that structure is within the town's right of way, so we'll be working with the highway department and the town engineer just to ensure that that is a satisfactory to all parties connection point. But that's a 30-inch storm system where the system to the north through the private property appears to only be a 12-inch storm sewer, so we think that that's most likely a better connection point for our system, but we will clarify that with staff. I believe I may have skipped over one comment, and that was one that also has not been addressed on the plans in front of you yet, but we look forward to working with the town on it, and that is related to trying to create a sidewalk along Hart Road for the frontage. There's quite a bit of grade change from north to south on the property, excuse my voice. We're up at about elevation 445 at the intersection of Ridge Road and Hart Road, and by the time we get to the south driveway entrance, we're down around 424. So we're about 20 feet in elevation change along there. There's several utilities, both drainage and electric poles and associated guy wires, et cetera. So while we don't necessarily want to include the expense of the sidewalk in the project, we understand the request from the town, and the owners directed me to explore if we can fit that sidewalk in there with the existing constraints and grades. So we'll work with town staff on that prior again to obtaining signatures on the plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to Al just to talk about the elevations and signage, That's on page three, number five.
My name's Al Hazelwood again, I'm the architect for the project. These various sunscreen monitors, we have the two rendered elevations, which are moving the east and the south. The south is where we've had them the last few minutes discussing feasibility of some landscape offer and coordination of trying to provide the tenant at the corner, some additional parking, building. Roughly indicates the colors that are standard choices for the blue and gray corporation. The roofing elements are scaly and low roofing, consistent with the small covering where the loading dock area and the towers have the same material utilized. We've indicated rectangular, rectangles, white in this case, for signage locations. The ones that are at the towers are, at this point, meant to be identifiers of glass. The ones at the doors or in the portions that are between the towers are indicators of tenant space. And when your building inspector initially had posed, it seemed like there was four entrances for only three tenants. The center tenant is a low-grade restaurant and temp room, which kind of function as one tenant. They have separate entrances that they can operate separately. They have a little bit more function that way. However, is, at this point, designated for the building with three tenants. I don't really know what else. Is there some additional questions that poses? People, I'd be happy to try to address those questions specifically.
Is it, the windows, are those, is that glass tapped to bottom? Is this what it's looking like?
Yes, most of it is. The bottom portions obviously are going to be shatter resistant like code requirements would be. Some of the ones on the front corner here that they're showing in your picture, the south, portion of those are going to be blacked out glass because they're actually going to have walls behind them. We wanted to create the element of the glass being completely visible from the street in respect to its openness and nearvability.
Your features right there, between those pillars right there, between the glass, is that brick or stone or something?
Yes, it's, um, it's, um, stone. It's weird stone, unblocked, because the structure of the building currently is all masonry, and we intend to apply synthetic stone to it. And then the stone actually, in some of those locations where the cursor is, you can see, if you follow that up past the roof, that's actually the same stone material. So we have a deviation in the elements of the structure.
No, actually, I think we did a nice job with that, considering the scenario. I would have liked to see some landscaping along there, but it doesn't fit.
There are spots within the sidewalk going out that we would more like to designate as some planting areas of those, which you referenced here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you are referring to the Ridge Road side or along the facade side, but we have tried to incorporate a couple of planters within the sidewalk areas that will have some seasonal plantings along the sidewalk area, along the Hart Road side as well. Just don't have that reflected in the landscaping plan, but it is planned for.
Yeah, I was referring to Ridge Road side, actually. I think they're there. Because it's land, there's nothing, you know, doesn't look. I mean, other buildings, there's used to be no sunscreen during the year. You know, years ago, when the town center came, they were supposed to plant trees along the expressway where the detention bound, retention bond is, and my feeling was a total waste, with trees there, because it's woods. It's full of trees anyways. Why are we planting, why are we getting to plant trees? So my suggestion was, for sidewalk, along whole road, use that same money and put that piece of what? You put that sidewalk, and there were people that said it'll never get used. Well, it gets used. So in regard to the sidewalk here, eliminating that, it costs a few bucks in the community putting the sidewalk in.
Along Hart Road, yes.
Yes, I think, I know it's a 20-foot drop, it's doable.
Yeah, I think it's really going to come down to whether or not there's horizontal space. I think we can definitely work out the vertical. There's some language within the ADA guidelines for dedicated roadway improvements that let you match the road slope instead of having to comply with shallower 5% like you do on normal sidewalks. So again, we'll work with the highway superintendent and the town engineer and then try to come up with a solution and install that sidewalk.
Okay, alright. There's a few things, I think, that still need to be addressed here, but, you know, we'll keep moving forward with it, but... As I'm listening to what you're saying there, I'm thinking you give up preliminary approval and reserve final approval until all these things are completed. There's not a whole item, but it should be all on the final drawings prior to approval. You know, there's some things that are like, yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but it really should be done before final approval is granted. It's a pretty good sized project here.
Yep, understood. I'm not 100% sure what that does from a scheduling standpoint, since I can't make eye contact right now, but I don't know that... The preference would be to obtain final if possible, but are you okay coming back next month, Jim, with these addressed, or... I thought perhaps it was the board's discretion.
Because if we give final approval based on what, there's some things lacking in here, and it's acknowledged, but it's got to be out of drawings, a lot of this stuff, all of this stuff. And it'll give you, what, three or four weeks to get this completed, come in with it, and then it's kick off. This is very similar to what we just dealt with, with Fairlight. You know, it came in and they were ready for final approval, but there were just a few things lacking. We've gotten blown with those kinds of situations before, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
We were just, we're hoping that we could work with Matt and the town, because we do have winter setting in, and I do know they want to get this rolling, and there's a decent amount of site work. So they have to wait for the final approval, that's to hold start construction.
I know, we need to...
Is it possible to do a meeting like we did for Fairlight in two weeks? But there is quite a few things...
They can complete them, I don't know if they can complete them.
Well, right, but understanding the fill, usually seeing some of the building materials, the landscaping plan, the drainage, those are, those are pretty substantial things.
Well, I would offer that the drainage plan, the landscaping plan is within the package that's, that was submitted to the board in review. So I know that there's tweaks that need to be made to those, but it is part of the package with relatively minor comment.
That, fair, fair point, but not understanding, we're still having to determine the type of fill material that's going to be used and how that impacts the drainage, and I want more coordination with the county water authority, and still need to do the geotech explorations, so I think landscaping aside, there's still a few other things that are fairly impactful and meaningful that would make it difficult to do a final approval.
Paul, what would you think of this?
Well, I think preliminary approval would be prudent, but I would say that if it comes back to the planning board on the 7th of November, that would give the PRC committee to meet on the 2nd. They should be able to have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, have everybody on PRC who they're kind of in their final review.
I prefer that.
They should be able to come in to the planning board for the next meeting with everything addressed.
Okay, thank you. Alright, again, it's public hearing, there's no wish to speak regarding this project. You know, and I guess we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board, any comments? They've covered pretty much everything. They've done a good job with it, but there are things, you know, we just don't need to get burned again, so we've done in the past with some of these preliminary files. And basing, basing it on the engineer's suggestion too, I'd say we move on from there. So we move forward, you guys okay moving forward with preliminary? Okay. Alright, well, then, we'll see you later, right? Eric, you want to do that?
I'm looking for an unlisted action. Town wants a planning board, it's a very requested by advocate Matt Tomlinson, marathon engineer, and to be... plaza, uh, six point six eight acre park, number S P L number zero seven nine point one five dash one, dash one point one, located at nine sixty-four Ridge Road, High Intensity Commercial District. The planning board determines that a proposed action is an enlisted action. The planning board determined that the action is subject to simulations and review pursuant to Part Six Seventeen point six B four of Seeker, and that is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of its actions. The planning board therefore designates itself the agency for the proposed action. The planning board is giving consideration of the criteria that determine the significance set forth in Sixteen point seven C one of Seeker, and has one, considered the information contained in the sure form of assessment form, Part One dated August thirty of two thousand and three, and two, considered color panels directed by the planning board during the public hearing on the third of two thousand and three, and three, discompleted parts to the environment assessment form. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Upsher Planning Board hereby determines that a proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it for the resolve that the town of Upsher Planning Board is authorized to make all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the town of Upsher Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be it for the resolve that the town of Upsher Planning Board, based on the information and analysis of the reference supported documentation, the discussions of the actions that the town of Upsher Planning Board has documented by the minutes before this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in significant environmental impacts. Be it for the resolve that the town of Upsher Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance, be it for the resolve that the town of Upsher Planning Board, based on both issues, a negative declaration, as I explained, is the determination.
Okay, a motion, you start.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Chris.
Aye.
Did you get the tape?
Yeah, yeah.
This is all the size.
Mr. Mixel?
Okay, all right, uh...
I vote aye as well.
Okay, a motion for, a motion for preliminary approval.
Make a motion for... Make a motion for preliminary approval, taking this place that we developed, located at nine sixty-four Ridge Road, subject to P R C candidates, subject to local credit issue, becoming back here, and so, from our current water authority candidates, um, are there any parents or appearances required for this?
No.
All approvals will be constructed according to specifications of the town of Upsher, all roadway construction according to the specification regulations set forth in the town of Upsher, all signbook is to be complied with the standards of the town of Upsher, complied with all requirements of any state, county, and town agency, addressed to agents, writing, signs, landscaping, offering, drawing, and school storage, the buildings are sites to draw in the... What is the number I have? Are you drawing over?
Uh, which improvements, I'm sorry?
The job number.
Oh, job, our job.
Your job number?
Our job, nineteen ninety-six, that's, yeah.
Fifteen ninety-six.
Okay, great.
Seven fifteen fourteen. Mr. Jackson, motion intercept, I'm sorry, motion intercept.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Krishan?
Aye.
Okay, um, preliminary approval, what are we doing? So we gotta stand still, hold?
Oh, I'll make a motion to, I'm just table, to file a proposal.
Oh, a motion.
Do you need a motion?
No, we had table, we're just holding up, we received preliminary approval, and the applicant to return.
Oh, it's election day.
Or whatever day it is, yeah.
Are you in session?
Yeah, it's election day.
Election?
Is that election day?
It is.
No, we're not. So, okay, so what are we doing, we, two weeks?
It says the seventh, I'm just gonna see, does that, does that?
No, it's the first Tuesday.
It is the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday, that's the first Monday, so it is election day. So, okay, so suppose, suppose we made it in three weeks, shortened it up a week, and we have a special meeting, that help you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, you, you guys wanna do that?
Mr. Krishan, does it have to go to P R C prior to the time? Because if it does, that's not gonna work.
Well, it's, it's P R C this, this week, this Thursday's P R C.
Correct.
Right?
But I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have a full, I'm sorry, what?
The nineteen, the next one, P R C after that.
If the P R C needs the full revised package and answers to the questions, then we would not have to buy this Thursday to the P R C. What you put up by the nineteen?
Josh, how long do you need to publish it?
Well, it's an internal, it's not a publishing. You mean with the legal notice or other than the P R C?
Yeah.
Legal, legal notice.
Uh, there is... Less than five, or even ten, sort of. So what date would work then?
Is, is this day, or January?
It's the same.
And that probably would be five, it would not be five, this would be like two, this day, from the nineteen, and then twenty-four, which would put it to like Halloween, or yeah, Halloween is an election day.
Halloween.
Well, that's a who you are, so, what, what I'd like to suggest is, Chris, well, less, you can notify the applicant, you have time to publish, you have time for the P R C, but why don't you go and check that the seventh is problematic, maybe it is not.
Well, according to my calendar here, it says November seventh is election.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just saying that it's not in this building, right, there's no...
Yes, it is.
Election is?
Yeah, voting is in this building.
It is?
It's on the court side, we're fine, that's why we're having it on the seventh.
Yes, so, so it's on the other side, so, you may very well be in it here, so I, I would say leave it on the seventh, and if, for some reason we find out that that's problematic, we still apply the yes, and that's good, good?
All right, that's it, that's it. All right, that's it, then I guess for the seventh, we're done. November seventh.